I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavell?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowicz?
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Just a moment. Good evening and welcome. Several years ago, we began recognizing District 211 students and graduates who serve in our nation's military ranks at Board of Education meetings. At this time, I'd like to ask Private Emily Canturojas to please come forward. Private Canturojas enlisted in the Army Reserve using the military's Split Option Program, allowing her to attend basic combat training at Fort Jackson in South Carolina following the completion of her junior year at Fremont High School. After basic training, Private Canturojas returned to Fremont High School, where she is currently completing her senior year. After graduation, Private Canturojas will complete her training at Fort Lee in Virginia as a supply specialist. Private Canturojas will attend college while continuing her military service with the Army Reserve, and following graduation, she plans to attend either the University of Illinois or Illinois State University, where she will pursue a degree in elementary education. Private Canturojas, on behalf of Fremont High School District 211 and the Board of Education, I thank you for your commitment and service to our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where riches stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Our first item of business tonight is recognitions. For that, Dr. Cates?
This time, I'd like to call Director of Athletics and Activities Eric Winkowski to the podium to introduce some wonderful students and coaches to us.
Board of Education, and Dr. Cates, thank you for taking some time tonight to honor some talented student athletes. Athletes, after I introduce your coach, they will introduce you. I'm asking that you please walk forward, get your award from your principal, and then stand here next to the podium. Parents, please stand and be recognized when instructed by the coaches. Assisting me with awards tonight are Palatine High School Principal Tony Medina and Athletic Director Jerry Dobbs, Fremont Principal Kurt Teniper and Athletic Director David Dick, and Schaumburg High School Principal Tim Little. All right, so we'll get started. Katie Cupka. Katie Cupka has been an English teacher at Palatine High School for 21 years. This is Katie's 17th year of coaching swimming at Palatine High School. She was the head boys' swimming and diving coach from 2000 to 2009, and the girls' assistant swimming coach and diving coach from 1999 to 2004. And from 2013 to 18, she was also assistant swim coach, and this is her first year as the head swimming and diving coach. Katie?
Here with her parents, Mark and Betsy, is Jane Smith. Jane has just concluded a stellar swimming career here at Palatine. Along with many other honors, she has qualified for the state meet all four years in both the 200 and 500 freestyle events. She placed eighth as a sophomore and seventh as a junior in the 500 free. This year, at the MSL Conference Meet, she finished second in the 500 and was the conference champion in the 200 free. She had a fantastic performance at the state meet, in which she finished fourth in the 200 free and third in the 500 free, which also earned her All-American status. She is finishing her career holding three Palatine pool records and three Palatine school records. She also has just been named the MSL West Swimmer of the Year. Next year, she will be studying in swimming at the University of Missouri. We're so proud of you, Jane. Congratulations. And now, I'm going to introduce our diving coach, Kurt Bendal.
Here with her parents, Juan and Gloria, is Anais Gonzalez-Passo. Through her dedication, commitment, and hard work ethic, she has had many outstanding achievements this year. Her top achievements are: She broke a 25-year-old school record at Palatine High School with a second-place finish performance at the sectional meet with a score of 469.85 points. Secondly, she handled herself outstandingly at this year's state meet, finishing in ninth place. Congratulations, Anais. Thank you.
All right, next, Tim O'Grady. Tim, why don't you come forward? Tim is in his fourth year of teaching math at Schaumburg High School, and for each of those four years, Tim has been both the boys' and girls' swimming coach. Tim?
Here with her parents, Chad and Tomo, is Nina Mullin. This November, Nina earned All-State Honors by swimming second place in the 200 IM at the state meet. Her time at the state meet, along with her 500 free and medley relay times at sectionals, qualified her for the All-American consideration. Along with her state performance, Nina has spent her season unbeaten in duel meets and in invites. She also broke the conference record in the 200 IM. Nina is a consistent leader with a phenomenal work ethic. She led her relay teams to state with two new school records. She now owns all but two individual school records at Schaumburg High School, as well as numerous pool records in the area. Congratulations on a great season, Nina.
All right, and our last team tonight will be the volleyball team from Fremont. Coach Kurt Penley has been teaching in District 211 since 1986. Kurt started teaching art and coaching, and I did not know this, track, girls' basketball, and volleyball at Palatine. He started the boys' volleyball program as a club sport at Palatine and served as their head coach for 11 years. He came to Fremont as the art department chair in 1997 and became both the boys' and girls' volleyball coach. Kurt is in his 21st season as the head girls' volleyball coach at Fremont. This year, Kurt reached the 500-win plateau, with he finished the season with 504 wins for his career. He also has 495 wins on the guys' side, for a total of 999. So I expect that he's going to be breaking that 1,000 and go over 500 this year for the boys. Kurt?
On behalf of the girls' volleyball program in Fremont High School, I'd like to thank you for inviting us this evening. I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Dan Cates, Director of Athletics and Activities, Mr. Winkowski, sorry about the doctor, Principal Kurt Teniper, Athletic Director David Dick, our parents for all of your support, encouragement, and inspiration throughout our state run and our trip downstate to Redbird Arena this season. Parents of athletes, if you would stand. Thank you for supporting and encouraging your athletes through the years and raising them to be fine, outstanding young women. As a program, we appreciate the opportunity to work with them and hopefully have helped them become more successful in life. Our coaches, please stand as well. Coach Nick Vassos, Coach Dan Hutton, Coach Vanya Achich, Coach Marco Kelly, and Coach Kelly Pucka. They are truly the reason our program's success, not just for this season but for many years. Their contribution to educating athletes on the court extends beyond their classroom academics and is truly appreciated. Now for our athletes. Senior outside, Cassie Seaver. Senior outside, Brezlin Reed. Captain, all-conference and all-area. Sophomore Defensive Specialist Izzy Segaviano. All-conference and all-area. Sophomore Outside hitter Samantha Gump. Junior Defensive Specialist Demi Yanis. Junior Outside hitter Crystal Cauchel. Sophomore Setter Elaine Rizzo. Sophomore Outside hitter Ryland Reed. Captain, all-conference, MSL Conference Player of the Year, and all-area. Senior Defensive Specialist Jessica Shu. Sophomore Middle Claudia Walla. Sophomore Setter Ryan Baker. All-area and all-conference. And Junior Middle Ellie Belmonte. Thank you very much.
This time, I'd like to ask Jessica Aliseo to please come to the podium. Each year, the Illinois Art Education Association recognizes an outstanding early-career art educator among a highly competitive slate of nominees. I am pleased to say that this year's recipient of the 2019 Early Professional of the Year Award is Schaumburg High School Art Department Chair Jessica Aliseo. This award recognizes teachers in the early years of their career for their dedication and commitment to students and the art education profession. Jessica is in her fifth year with District 211 and her first as the Chair of Schaumburg High School's Art Department. In her short time in District 211, Jessica has not only worked hard at helping students have success in her art classrooms, but has also worked to develop and expand our broadcast programming, including Palatine High School's Pirate TV, where she taught prior to becoming a teacher at Schaumburg High School. Congratulations, Jessica, on this outstanding early-career recognition, and we look forward to more great accomplishments in the future. Please come forward to receive a certificate from Board President Babla Fever. Every year, the Illinois Association for Behavioral Health Prevention Leadership Award recognizes the hard work and commitment of a person who contributes to the addiction prevention field in the state of Illinois. This year, I am proud to announce that Schaumburg High School Counselor Brent Swolski was chosen as the association's statewide award recipient. Brent has been recognized for his ability to deliver innovative ways of encouraging students to grow their leadership skills and provide education on healthy ways to prevent addiction. He has worked as the advisor for Operation Snowball since the program began in 2009, and each year has helped students attend the Seaborn Goodman Teen Institute, a statewide leadership conference for the snowball program. He has worked numerous weekends running leadership training for Operation Snowball student leaders, and recently coordinated the group's first-ever overnight training session. On behalf of the students and staff at Schaumburg High School and the Board of Education, congratulations on this award, Brent. I know you've poured yourself into this program for many years, and we are appreciative of that. Please come forward to receive your certificate from Board President Babla Fever. Every two years, each state submits its finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. This award is the highest honor presented by the United States Government for Science, Technology, Engineering, Mathematics, and Computer Science Teaching. And state finalists are considered among the best educators in their respective fields. Two years ago, Hoffman Estates High School Chemistry Teacher Tanya Katovich was named a 2017 Illinois finalist for the Presidential Award. I'm pleased to announce that of the three Illinois nominees for 2019, Tanya is once again among the finalists for this prestigious award. As a state finalist, Tanya will be considered for the national recipient from Illinois in a couple of years. Congratulations on this outstanding recognition and being named a finalist. We wish you all the best with the national selection process, and it would be our hope and honor to recognize you sometime in the future as a national recipient. Please come forward to receive a certificate from Board President Babla Fever. Each year, the Illinois State Board of Education sponsors Those Who Excel Awards to honor individuals who have made significant contributions to our public schools throughout the state. Tonight, we are proud to recognize several District 211 individuals who have been honored for their professional contributions, leadership, and community service. Each Those Who Excel Award recipient will receive a crystal apple from Board President Babla Fever, similar to the one that you see here, displayed on the board table. When your name is called, please come forward and stand next to the podium. Ashley Krippinger. Ashley's being recognized for the Early Career Educator category. From high school, math teacher Ashley Krippinger had dreams of becoming a teacher when she used to play school with her sister as a child. This plan was solidified after she moved to a new school twice while she was growing up, and both times, she had teachers who went out of their way to make her feel welcome and help her adjust. It is that helping attitude that defines Ashley's work as a teacher at Fremont High School. In discussing Ashley's work with their son, a parent described her as "the one who makes it happen" in the "make it or break it" situation of helping him adapt to difficulties. One of Ashley's fellow teachers commented that she is "one who has found new ways to enrich the Fremont High School student experience." This colleague said, "She approaches everything in life with passion and thoughtfulness." Thank you, Ashley, for all you do for Fremont High School, for the community, and congratulations on this outstanding recognition. Dina's being recognized in the Student Support Personnel category. Palatine High School social worker Dina Havens had her mind set early on what she wanted to do for her career, as early as junior high school. While attending Hoffman Estates High School, she had numerous conversations with the school's social worker about the nature of her work. After completing both her bachelor's and her master's degree, Dina worked for schools in North Carolina before returning to the Chicago area, and we were fortunate to hire her at Palatine High School. Her work has been noted by one teacher as having "an immediate impact on the positive culture at Palatine High School." In discussing a student recovering from difficulties, one parent said, "Her remarkable turnaround would not have been possible without Dina's calm, easy manner, support, and encouragement." On behalf of the Palatine High School community and the Board of Education, congratulations, Dina, on this well-deserved honor. Tanya Katovich. Recognized in the Classroom Teacher category. Hoffman Estates High School Chemistry Teacher Tanya Katovich has spent her career sharing what she describes as her "two greatest passions," practicing chemistry and teaching. Tanya has always been one who has promoted the latest advances and principles in the field of chemistry through impactful initiatives like the next-generation science standards. Parents have discussed the lasting impact Tanya has had on her students, as evidenced by the fact that multiple former students have gone on to successful careers, including some becoming chemistry teachers themselves. She has been described by colleagues as "one of the leading science educators in the Chicago area," and this year, Tanya was one of the 10 finalists elected for the Illinois Teacher of the Year Award. Congratulations, Tanya, on your recognition for all that you do for our students, and I have seen your classroom and your students, and it is electric. Thank you very much for all of your service. Mark Langer. Recognized in the School Administrator category. For nearly five years, Mark Langer has served as Assistant Principal and Student Activity Director at Conant High School. Prior to this, Mark served in a similar role at Palatine High School, where he also began his District 211 career as a science teacher. Mark has been described by parents as "approachable, professional, and a true advocate for students." Students have equally commented on his dedication, stating that he is committed to the students and their school. One student even referred to Mark as "the face of Conant." Staff members at Conant High School refer to Mark as "someone who takes an active interest in each of the school's activities, and most importantly, the students involved in those activities." One sponsor said that he has seen Mark go out of his way to understand how their student groups meet, and he is always open to suggestions in terms of how to better support them. Mark, on behalf of the parents, students, and staff, congratulations on this well-deserved
Susan Cates. Recognized in the Community Volunteer category. In 2014, Susan Cates found herself looking for a way to help support District 211. Members of the district administration suggested using her knowledge she had amassed from years of working as a display coordinator and accessory and inventory control manager to help our district's building construction program. Susan met regularly with students and staff through the planning and construction process, discussing a variety of interior design plans and color paths. She would then coordinate with vendors to aid in the students' plans, helping them make it a reality. Students and staff alike have said that Susan was always available for conversations about the interior design plans. One said, "She was always welcoming and open to letting me talk to her about the details we were picking out." A teacher had praise for her attention to detail, saying, "She does not settle on something because it is easy. Instead, she will keep searching for the design element that fits everyone's shared vision." I'd like to congratulate Susan on her Those Who Excel Award recognition and thank her for her commitment and dedication to District 211 students and staff.
Schaumburg High School Instructional Development Team. Created in 2015, the Instructional Development Team has the responsibility of developing and implementing a strategic plan of professional learning for the staff at Schaumburg High School. Comprised of staff members and administrators, the team has a mission to plan, implement, and evaluate a comprehensive professional learning program for the staff that is based on research best practices, supports district and school goals, and improves learning. A district administrator stated that the team has influenced Schaumburg High School's culture of teaching, reflecting, and learning. The team's approach of helping to develop all staff members has been described as "by the teachers, for the teachers," and has been credited with creating a fabric of professional development support throughout the building, which has resulted in a more collaborative faculty willing to seek help and to share ideas. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to congratulate each of you. Please come forward when I call your name. I'm going to call everyone's name, just to make sure that we honor them. Alina Morelli-Baima. Jason Campbell. Brian Curtin. Yasi Delgado. Matt Gruska. Adam Kaznicke. Megan Moran. This time, I'd like to ask Kurt Teniper, Principal at Fremont High School, to please Emily got you. She picked you up on that one. Earlier this school year, William Fremont High School was one of 362 schools recognized nationally as a 2019 United States Department of Education Blue Ribbon School of Excellence. Now, in its 37th year, the National Blue Ribbon School Program recognizes exemplary schools that are among their state's best in overall academic performance or progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. This award affirms the dedication and hard work of Fremont High School's staff, its families, and the community in providing outstanding educational opportunities for all students to be successful. This is the second time Fremont High School has been a recipient of this prestigious award. Principal Kurt Teniper, Social Studies Teacher Mike Bruce, and I were grateful to have the opportunity to attend the official Blue Ribbon Award Ceremony in Washington, DC in mid-November, and the two of them could not have been any more proud to accept this award on behalf of their colleague students in school. Congratulations to the Fremont High School staff and the entire school community on
All right, I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight. It's really a pleasure to be able to recognize all your accomplishments and your achievements here tonight at the board meeting. Before we continue on with the business portion of our meeting, we're going to pause for a couple of minutes, if you care to get any additional pictures tonight, and after that pause, we'll continue on with the business portion of our meeting. Thank you. And if we come back to order, we'll continue on with the meeting. Next, we have Public Comments and Hearings. First, we have Public Comments. Is there... If there's anyone here tonight who didn't sign in on the sheet, you're still welcome to address the board if you'd like. The first person that did sign up is Dan Harrington. Oh, okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board, then? Yep, please come forward, Ms. Wilson.
Vicki Wilson, Palatine resident. I just wanted to say a few things tonight. I guess I'm not going to stop speaking out on this, because when this all started years ago, several, well, numerous people reached out to us, two that I'll never forget. One was a man who, he begged me to not stop speaking on the issue, because he had transitioned, had mutilated his body, and now was suicidal because he couldn't fix it. And then, one was a woman, who she said for years, as a child, she desperately wanted to be a boy, and it went on for years. And eventually, the feelings went away, and now she's a happily married mother of two. And she knows that if she grew up today, she's so grateful she didn't grow up today, that she would have transitioned, been put on hormones, and she wouldn't have her life today. So, this is just about preserving children's right to decide as adults, because we're adults a lot longer than we're children. And this radical movement that has overtaken our society is taking away the rights of children, to preserve their right to decide once their mind is fully formed. So I just want to share a few words from a medical student. The student says, "I started medical school after already completing two rounds of graduate-level training and a military tour of duty. I expected my assumptions to be challenged and relished the opportunity to learn to analyze complex cases from diverse viewpoints. Instead, I find myself sending out this anonymous gasp, a gasp of the canaries, into the cyber universe. My hope in writing is that if enough people join together, critical analysis and honest inquiry will be restored to medicine. More than halfway through my program, despite passing every class and meeting every requirement, I fear dismissal, refusal of licensure, and professional retribution for simply asking science-based questions on transgender care. What is my view? It is that gender dysphoria in children is often a symptom of other psychiatric problems. That children who suffer from gender dysphoria should be evaluated and treated by a trained psychiatrist or psychologist for other mental conditions before undergoing hormones or irreversible treatments. That since long-term studies do not show a reduced suicide rate among persons who have undergone gender-affirming procedures..." have undergone gender-affirming procedures, they are unethical to perform in children. That hormone therapies expose patients to increased risk of cancer, autoimmune, and cardiovascular disease, so should be delayed as long as possible. Younger patients are at greater risk because they are still developing and will undergo the treatment for a longer period of time. That giving testosterone to biological females and estrogen to biological males or chemically delaying puberty may exacerbate underlying mental illness in their still-developing brains. All of these concerns deserve thoughtful discussion and research. Surfing them in public could have grave consequences to my education and future career. So far, I've seen two professors dismissed for smaller violations. Nearly every class involves transgender content. Instead of critical analysis, we are subjected to an endless string of indoctrination sessions. Just a small sample. Pubertal suppression for gender dysphoric children is to be initiated at the first signs of puberty. Child protective services are to be called if parents resist gender-affirming treatments. We are not presented with the longitudinal studies demonstrating this to be ineffective. Such studies are weak or nonexistent or fail to demonstrate a benefit. It is inappropriate to see if they can be helped with less invasive means. We are to eliminate women's health language from our vocabulary and practice. We are expressly told, "Do not assume there are mental health concerns in trans individuals." How can this be when there is a high rate of mental illness, victimization, and suicidal behavior in this population? No cautions about sexual exploitation or screening for sexual abuse are issued, although both of these tragedies are correlated strongly with gender dysphoria. Instead, we are told to regard all sexual activities in teenage patients as healthy and to encourage sexual experimentation. Sex, we are told, is purely for pleasure. We are not to discuss reducing risky choices, but rather encourage teens to be safer in their exploration. So back to the canaries. They're gasping for air in our modern medical system. Who are they? They are the critical thinkers, the people of faith, and most of all, transgender persons who are being ill-served by a system that is exploiting them. So I read this because my hope in reading it is that if enough people join together, critical analysis and honest inquiry will be restored to public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Harrington?
Oh, yes. Good. Not as big of a crowd as the last board meeting. My name is Dan Harrington. I live in District 211, and I oppose any policy that forces minors to use restrooms at other facilities with the opposite sex. Dr. Cates, I find it shocking for you to say to open up restrooms and locker rooms to members of the opposite biological sex has been implemented without incident or controversy. Did you ignore students who spoke out against this? Did you ignore the numerous anonymous statements from students who disagreed? What about parent or parent after spoke out against this? Did you forget there was a lawsuit? If this has been implemented on controversy, why were the board meetings moved to large venues? Why all the extra security? Why all the public comment? I remember a few of you board members commenting how much citizen input you have received. This action sparked so much controversy, it's made national news. The administration has said the district will accommodate these for every student uncomfortable with the latest policy allowing for full access. Do you really have enough facilities for potentially 11,000-plus students? If so, why were students denied these accommodations in the past? Pete Dombrowski and Mark Kramer, I want to publicly thank you for voting against his latest policy for allowing for full access. I'm glad I voted for you, and we continue to do so if you keep on supporting other students' privacy. For the other board members, I really wish this could be a two-way discussion, like a town hall. However, in this case, you might not want a discussion. I have yet to hear a good argument for these policies. You cannot change your gender. I think your board members know that boys don't belong in girls' facilities. If you did, why not allow for full access years ago? Why go before whatever state commission you went through and argue against allowing full access? I tried getting your voting records on this, but it could not seem to find them. That is what is so puzzling. A few years ago, this board decided not to allow full access, went before a state commission arguing against full access, and went to court not to allow full access in the case with Nova McDay. And then suddenly, in September, this board pushes for full access as fast as possible. Most of you board members were here in 2017 and 2018. These statements that Mr. Rosenbaum, Mr. Young, and Mrs. Klimkowitz gave supporting this policy, mistitled "Equal Educational Opportunities," seemed as if you're trying to justify something you know is wrong. Yet you three were on the board in 2017 and 2018 when this board decided not to allow for full access. I tried getting your voting records, but it could not seem to find them. So what changed? One can only speculate. This is Illinois. What's the lawsuit with ACLU? I just do believe that is not some sort of enlightenment. Now, I want to highlight a privacy request form that every parent, D-211 parent, can form the request for their child. This form is available on D211ParentsForPrivacy.Weebly.com. I know you board members probably, most of you probably didn't hear a word I said, but I know this is videotaped. I know the media minutes are going to be recorded, and I want to highlight this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who didn't get a chance to sign up that would like to address the board? Okay, that will bring us to the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing on the proposed 2019 tax levy. We have the first suggested motion that the public hearing on the proposed 2019 tax levy of Township High School District 211 is now open. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. The hearing is open. Is there anyone that would like to address the board regarding the 2019 levy? Okay. We now have our second suggested motion that the public hearing on the proposed 2019 tax levy of Township High School District 211 is now closed. All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The hearing is now closed. That will bring us to our consent agenda. We have a suggested motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. All right. That will bring us to special reports. First, we have our Freedom of Information Act requests. If there's nothing here, next item is our 2019 Advanced Placement Honor Roll. No questions or comments here? That will bring us to our Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. All right. I would just like to take a moment to recognize Lauren Hummel, Barb Peterson, and everyone else that participated in the preparation of our financial reports, as always. Congratulations once again. That will bring us to unfinished business. We have the adoption of the 2019 tax levy. Suggested motions that the Board of Education approve the amount of $235,932,000 as the 2019 tax levy of Township High School District 211. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick recap from my perspective. $17 million in a pending land sale, $8 million surplus from last year, a $5 million unnecessary payment to IMRF, that's $30 million, that is at D-211's hands, and the projected tax increase is around $8 million. We are, I don't believe that that is reasonable fiscal stewardship of the taxpayer's dollar, and I will vote no against this levy.
When are we looking to close on the land, on the 60 acres?
In April.
Okay.
I have just a quick question. We're going to levy specific to the IRMF fund, $4.17 million. Will we be able to extend that if we find that our IRMF is such that contributions wouldn't be warranted beyond the minimum requirement? Or is there a risk that that fund will compound and grow excessively beyond once we don't have any of these additional payments and we're levying such a high amount relative to what the requirement may be?
Sure. So, the question is premised on the reality that when we make the IMRF liability payments, as we have been in past years and is as recommended for action tonight, that lowers our yearly operating cost, which is fundamentally interest. And so, in the past, we have had to make a higher amount in our levy attributable to the IMRF purpose. And this year, we did reduce that substantially. I'm going to let Lauren answer the question in terms of where does the amount that we've levied stand relative to our amount, but we believe that it is actually aligned with the lower rates that we've been paying. They had been over 10%, and now they're down in the sevens. I believe that's the nature of your question. Is that right?
If I recall, we have payments that are around $2, $2.5 million annually to IRMF as the minimum employer contribution, or am I underestimating that?
Our IMRF contribution is more than $4 million for our employer expenses. And as Dr. Cates shared, you will see that in the levy recommendation for this year that it is, there is a 7% reduction in the levy for the IMRF expenses specifically. And then, we also have a decrease for our social security funds as well. What we have been able to do, then, is reallocate because we have a lower employer cost annually. We're able to allocate those funds, then, into other, the levy dollars into other operating funds.
So then, just to be clear, we're still, we're not passing those savings along to property taxpayers. We're just taking that and putting that into the working cash levy. Is that correct?
Well, we are putting in the working cash levy so that we are able to pay for life safety projects absent debt, which is a part of the board's strategic plan. And I would say that with us being able to do that, we are paying for all of those projects within the operating cap of our levy without having to extend additional debt and expense onto our taxpayers.
Right. But the giant increase in the working cash is most likely do that shift considering that we've been budgeting out of our reserve funds to manage our capital programs, and then, once that shift was in place, we were doing that annually. We're not expecting a one-to-one increase in our capital project budget relative to the increase in the working cash, correct?
No. We have a $1.2 million increase in our working cash levy that is specifically twofold. Number one, we have to maintain a specific balance in our working cash fund at all times. And the additional expenses, you'll recall, we received approval of our life safety survey late last spring, and we're able to start on those projects this summer. But we have an additional, I would say, the amount that we'll spend in the coming summers will increase slightly to be able to complete those projects in the five-year window. So, we will have additional expenses beginning next summer. The overall total cost of the survey does not increase, but the rate at which we will pay for those will begin to increase next summer, and those funds will be levied for that purpose.
And in specific, why are we accelerating to a five-year window versus stretching? Our life safety needs to be like within a 10-year window, right?
The survey has to be conducted every 10 years. The projects must be conducted five years. And there used to be a provision by which you could extend that, and that no longer exists.
Okay. Thank you.
A question. Are we going to have a discussion and a vote on a resolution to put money into IRF the advanced payment tonight?
Yeah, it's on the agenda for board action to make that payment, yes.
And that's going to be in new business or old? Where is, I don't...
It's in new business.
Which, which per?
It's AE. It's under a resolution. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Black and white?
Sure.
Okay. So I'll defer my comments until that point.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments regarding the levy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Nay.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Next, that'll bring us to new business. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the June 30, 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which includes the financial statements as prepared by Township High School District 211 and audited by Baker Tilly Virchow Krauss LLP, Certified Public Accountants. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
All right. And I believe we have Mike Malott here from Baker Tilly.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me tonight to present this year's audit for June 30, 2019. Just before I get started, I just wanted to thank Lauren and Barb for dealing with us for the audit. We kind of come in and disrupt the day-to-day, kind of turn everything upside down, empty everybody's pockets, and see what's going on, and do that while doing their day job. It's a big ask, and I just thank them for giving us everything we need, answering every question we have timely. We can't audit what we don't have, so the fact that they're able to prepare everything and give it to us every year at a high level and quality of detail is just, it makes our job easier to do. So I'd just like to thank them first before going into my little spiel here. So, this year is a year, some of the stuff is, you've heard before as board members that present, but I'd like to go over kind of what we did so you know what we're here for, what we do. And primarily, what we do is we take your financial information for the fiscal year, and we give it a real big kick of the tires to say, you know, does the information you're presenting in your financial statements materially represent your financial position? Doesn't mean we look at every dollar. Doesn't mean we look at every single transaction. It looks, we look at the key, significant items that happen in operations. We look at your processes, your controls, so not just numbers, but really what you do, how you operate as an organization, and provide recommendations, identify things that could be improved, or give a clean opinion. What we do on your CAFR, as we have in prior years, we provide you what we'll call an unmodified opinion. It's the highest level of assurance we can provide. So within our standards, we can only give such a high level, and we give you that, saying that the financial statements as presented give a materially representative position of where you are financially as of June 30. It is as of June 30, so there's a statement that is what you are of that date, and then an annual statement. So it doesn't really necessarily give you a good picture of what fluctuates during the year, but it gives you a holistic view of annually what happened, and then where you are as of that kind of beginning of the new school year and of the prior school year. So just kind of context of where those numbers stand. So, as I look at things, we also do, as I said, we also not only just look at the numbers, which we do, we spend a lot of time looking at the numbers, analyzing them, what happened, what changed from prior years, et cetera. We also look at your processes, your controls, and it's part of our requirements to communicate anything that would be a significant issue or risk to the profile and the way things are operating. And I'm glad to report there are no significant findings in your key transaction cycles and processes. So payroll processes, cash disbursements, your close processes, some of your receiving processes, we do a real deep dive into how those transactions are processed and handled, and make sure that there's good review controls, responsibilities are properly segregated, and everything's getting the proper review and due diligence before payments are made, things are recorded, et cetera. And we have no significant findings to report related to that. Additionally, that information usually comes into what's called our communication to the board and management. Additionally, in that letter, it's kind of our report. The financial statements are your numbers, are your results. We just give the opinion at the beginning. That's really the only thing that comes from us for that report. Everything else is your numbers. Our communication letter is really our report. It's what we saw. It's the results of what we did. Tells you a little bit about what we intend to do, what our responsibilities are as your auditors, what management's responsibility is, what your responsibility is as those charged with governance. It's standardized. It's within accordance with the audit guidelines and what's required to be done. It also gives us results of what happened. You know, if there ever are disagreements with management, or if there were significant changes in your standards and your practices, we would disclose that information in there for you. This year was a fairly quiet year. No new standards for once, no truly significant upheavals in what's presented. So, it's a fairly straightforward communication this year. Next year, there will be a big change in your presentation. Your student activity accounts, which are currently called fiduciary accounts right now, are going to get rolled up into your educational fund. It's a change in the accounting standards. It's not a change in anything, how they're operated or governed, but it changes how they're presented. It's also going to change how we're going to audit them next year. So you will see, there will be a big difference in the way we approach them going forward, which I think will be for the better. We're going to probably spend a lot more time digging into them than we've had to in accordance with the other standards in the past. So this year was quiet. Next year will be the opposite of that in terms of what we have to do. Another thing we do outside of looking at the numbers is we examine your federal awards. So, the federal government has some very strict guidelines as to not only how you spend those awards, but also how it's audited. So this year, we did a very, very deep dive into the child nutrition programs. Came back, we had no reportable findings associated with that. It's a clean result, which is great. I know every now and then, you always find something. We have to be really, really, really nitpicky on that. So the fact that we find nothing is a testament. It's, we, more often than not, will find something. So, the programs run very cleanly. We're able to get a result, so you'll have a clean opinion in that regard. We also look at your ICCB funds. so you'll have a clean opinion in that regard. We also look at your ICZB funds, so the adult education programs. We do some compliance testing in accordance with the Illinois Community College Board's guidelines there, and we give a report, and it's a report and communication on that. Lastly, ISB requires us to submit another report. It's basically another version of the financial statements, regurgitated in a different format. We have to give an opinion on that. It also does provide some information relates to your financial health and gives a score. So, it's called the Financial Profile Score. The district, as it has in prior years, has the highest designation of recognition. They have three levels. Recognition is the highest level. It portrays strong financial health. Last thing, which hasn't been completed yet, it will be completed in the new year. There's a longer deadline for this. It is a new requirement by the state of Illinois. It is everybody's bane of our existence at the moment. It is called the governmental administrative, or GADA is the acronym, the Governmental Accountability and Transparency Act, requires a new set of reporting. It's, again, a kind of another step to go over for the finance team to prepare and do. It is a detailed description of your spending of state and federal awards. So, it kind of takes what we do on the federal side, it adds some state grants in there, and we have to do some, a little bit of work around that. So, that'll be something that will come in the new year. It'll be a new report that has to be issued and is publicly available and submitted to the state. So, with that, that's kind of what we do. In terms of numbers, you guys have the numbers in front of you. If there's ever a section to look at, you know, it's a big report. Not everybody wants to look at every detailed number in there. The management discussion and analysis is, if there's any section you look at, it's about, what, 11 or 12 pages, I believe, and it's a distillation of everything big that happened. If you're going to spend the time reading it, and if not in detail, that's the biggest bang for your buck. There's also some really good trend information in the statistical section in the back. So, if you want to see where things are going, that's where to look as well. Gives you a good kind of context for where your financial position is now versus where it has been in the past. Also gives you some other, maybe less than financial-related information, a lot of demographic information, some other kind of, I think, interesting tidbits to see kind of how things are flowing, both financially, demographically, and some other kind of operational information as well. So, with that, if you have any questions, let me know.
You're aware that we have implemented some financial strategies involving some of our pension liabilities and IMRF, and that's presented in our?
Correct.
In our financial report. Can you give some comments about what we've done and the impact, short-term and long-term, on that strategy, and how you think that is affecting the district's fiscal or financial fitness?
Okay. So, you have three, what I call, significant long-term liabilities. IMRF, THAS is your two pension plans that the district provides funding to. You have two OEP plans. Primarily, THAS is all that really matters. That's the big guy. That's the big elephant in the room at every district throughout the state. They're all a little different. With IMRF, it's called an Agent Multiple Employer Plan. So, basically what it is, when you contribute to IMRF, that's your money. It's, you know, while IMRF will invest all of it as a big pool, they track, excuse me, track your money. It's your, if you contribute it, it's your funds that goes to your retirees. Because of that, when you make a contribution, both your minimum contribution and any additional contribution, that goes directly to the benefit of your future required payments. So, if you think about the annual rate that is required to be contributed, that is driven by where you're at today. So, when you put money in, so the additional contribution, it's not just additional money and doesn't impact. It has a longer-term impact in terms of reducing your annual rate, because IMRF does these calculations. And I don't exactly, they don't really give us the exact way it's done, but there's consideration of how unfunded you are. And the higher your unfunded amount, that plays in the calculation of what your required contribution percentage is for the next year, because they do some interest calculations and they compound it. So, by doing those additional contributions, yes, you're tightening up, you're putting money into a restricted purpose, giving to them in the short term, but, one, they invest it very well historically. They've gotten greater returns, because they can invest in much more sophisticated investment vehicles than any local government in the state of Illinois or really thought the country can do. So, they have access to certain sources, that you as a district do not have. There's a benefit to that. Secondly, there is the fact that if you're putting that money in, it's going to reduce that future burden. Now, thankfully, IMRF is very well-funded at the moment, and it's well-run, so you're generally at a very high funded ratio. But, you know, just a few years ago, you were probably in a 20%, you know, contribution rate per dollar. Most districts are about 18, 19, 20% who don't give extra. I think you guys are around 10, or even, maybe even lower than that going forward. I know last year, I think it was around 11%. So, there's a tangible 9% to 10% per dollar if you have millions of dollars of payroll that's dictated off of. It's just the timing of when you contribute. So, contributing earlier, it does restrict your cash flow. So, if you were tight on your cash flow, it would be something that may be difficult. But if you have funds in excess, contributing that extra there, one, it puts that money to work, to earn, which, as we all know, I think this is the first year we were, I was laughing earlier about, this is the first year I actually had to go really spend some time on investment income, because there just hasn't been anywhere for, I feel like, a decade. Now, people can start earning a little bit of money, but it's still not much. So, you can earn money with IMRF. It also does impact, and it compounds. Think about any interest, right? It compounds over time. If you put money away, you compound that interest in earning, but also compounds the way IMRF calculates your contribution. It compounds how much you owe them going forward. So, it reduces that. So, there's less of a unfunded liability for that interest to compound that they add on to your required contribution. So, it's, it's like, it's kind of calculated, theoretical in some ways, but practically speaking, it's basically you're funding it now to smooth out the potential funding in the future. And as resources, we know the atmosphere in terms of the state's financial status right now. If it's going to go one way, it's probably going to be restrictions on your funding resources down the road. Maybe not today, maybe not even the next couple of years, but eventually, there's going to be some pressure. So, if you have the resources available, it's not the worst thing in the world to do, if you have. The downside is, obviously, you're restricting some funds that could be used for other purposes if you have them. That's IMRF. THAS and TRS are completely different animals. They are what are called cost-sharing plans. The big difference there is you give them extra money, which I don't even think you can do, but if you gave them extra money, it just goes into a big pot that gets shared by every district in the state of Illinois. So, you don't get any real credit. And those plans are obviously much less well-funded. I believe TRS is at 40%, and THAS is currently running a deficit. So, not only would I, would you want to think about, okay, would I give them the money to use? One, you're not getting the credit for it. Two, they're just not well-funded. IMRF is a completely different organization. They're very separate from the state of Illinois, and because of that, they have the returns and the funded status that they currently have compared to the other plans. Secondly, now, what you can do with that, there's options you can do that. You can plan. I mean, right now, TRS mostly is a state obligation. I think it's 96% or 94% of that liability, which is $27, $29 billion, or no, sorry, $61 billion. I'm wrong. Last time I looked. That's mostly on the state. That could change. So, right now, you have a relatively small liability for that. THS, which is a much larger one, I think it's $114, $115 million for you guys, that's because more, about half of it is on the hook of the districts. The rest is on the state. That could change. Someone could pass legislation to change, you know, do pension reform. Right now, they just passed, or they're in the process of really reforming local municipality pensions. Eventually, they could turn their eyes towards who's going to pay for the school district pensions. With being so heavily unfunded, who are they going to look to? They'll probably look to the local districts. I hate to be the bareban of that. I don't see any way how if there is a change, it's going to be for the benefit of local districts. So, while I wouldn't recommend giving money to THAS or TARS, if you want to strategically plan for the costs that you could have that would spike in the future, the pension costs are where it's at, there's a million ways you can do that. You could just set aside some money every year. You could restrict it. You could keep it in your regular operations, just set aside, kind of as a side. You can use certain investment vehicles within your statutory abilities to kind of earn some money for a long-term perspective. Again, it comes down to what your other spending plans are, but if you have resources available, it's a strategy to kind of own it yourself, right? With TRS and THS, because you don't get credit for extra contributions like you do with IMRF, keep that, keeping that in-house and kind of managing whatever long-term plans you have, just kind of like a capital plan, right? You set money aside for capital projects. Pensions should be viewed the same way in some ways, because those costs are only going to continue to rise and spike. Hope that answers your question. I know I talked for a long time.
Thank you.
Because it's the common question we get from everybody.
Any other questions or comments for Mike? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. Next, we have the operating fund balance for the period ending June 30, 2019. Just a report. Any questions or comments here? Okay, that will bring us to the 2018-2019 Popular Annual Financial Report of Board of Education Funds. Any questions or comments here? Yeah, I'd just like to, you know, recognize everybody that participated in the preparation of this. It's really, it's much more, it's easier for people to read and digest, and there are a lot of useful statistics that, you know, rise to the top very quickly. So, if you haven't taken a look at it, it's worth a few minutes.
I would just highlight, actually, the communications department's heavily involved, certainly the business department. This really emanated from our community engagement sessions, where person after person would say to me, you know, geez, I didn't know that. I was not aware of that. And so, we tried to devise a way of how do we help more people be aware in an accessible way. So, thanks to all the people who have contributed.
All right. Next, we have student user fees. Just some introductory information. Does anybody have any questions or comments here? All right, that will bring us to resolution authorizing additional employer contributions to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing an additional employer contribution to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund in the amount of $5 million to be made before December 31, 2019 as follows. $3,500,000 from the Operations and Maintenance Fund, and $1,500,000 from the Municipal Retirement Social Security Fund. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion here?
Again, it's iterative or reiterative. Again, my position on this is, and we went over this with the communication from the superintendent, we are on a 30-year return on investment, okay? We're going to, cumulatively, District 211 will have put in $21 million. The projection from IMRF is that there will be a savings, and that's kind of a, that's not exactly the right word that I would use, of $800,000 a year. That's a 30-year return for money that could have been used for something else. As the accountant said, District 211 seems to be doing it because we have the money, which begs the question, why are we pulling it out, why do we put money into an education fund where that is a primary responsibility of this board to make sure that that thing is operating, and pull it out and put it into a retirement fund which is rock solid? We are not in, in any way, shape, or form going to default or not make up a pension payment. That is not going to happen. The rules laid out by IMRF are minimum required employer contribution, and then if there, for any shortfall, there's a penalty, okay? In my opinion, that is a cost of doing business. Why, it doesn't make any sense to me to divert $21 million because we can instead of putting it into the education programs here in District 211. Let's go to the current state of the stock market. We were told, we're under the impression, or we're told, that the returns on our money is around 17%. By my calculations, if, based on the number, it was around $54 million in what's called what, IMRF reserves. Is that the correct term? I mean, I was looking for how much, what our total value was, and what I, the answer I received was around $54 million in reserves. Are they the same?
There is $54 million, and yes, the rate of returns on the investments through the middle of November was, is 17% for all IMRF investments for 2019.
And that equates to around $8 million, maybe more. The shortfall that the $5 million seems to have been predicated upon was that was the actuarial unfunded liability by GASBY, what, 68? What's the, which one is IMRF using?
GASBY 68 is the figure that is reported in the CAFER, and GASBY 50 is the...
It's GASBY 50, which seems to be the real number.
The smoothing, mhm.
Okay, so, we're going to make $8 million as a minimum unless the market crashes, which it's not going to, which is going to wipe out. It's going to eliminate that unfunded liability. There's just no way. It's not going to. Part of the conversation was, there has been very little movement in the number of employers, or the demographic, the employees or the demographics of the employees, which is another factor. So, with that being level or that being flat, the driving force is going to be the market returns. This is absolutely unnecessary to do. The money needs to go someplace else, and we're taking it out of the education fund. I just, I don't understand.
What if I could clarify that the suggested motion is that there would be $3.5 million that is taken out of the operations and maintenance fund, and $1.5 million out of the IMRF and Social Security Fund?
Yeah, right. I mean, that's money dedicated to IMRF, but 3.5 mil is operations, education and other. Am I correct?
It would be out of, just specifically out of the operations and maintenance fund. The educational fund would be a separate fund.
Okay, so, there's no money coming out of that?
Correct. That is the recommendation.
And operations and maintenance is what?
That would be our fund that supports the operations and maintenance of our facilities primarily. So, we have approximately 70% fund balance in that fund right now. All of the employees that are paid out of that fund are our custodial maintenance employees. They are all IMRF participants, and the funds are used directly to pay for the employer costs related to those employees as well.
Thank you for the clarification. But, a deep question is, if we don't need the money to operate, why was the money levied and put in there in the first place? Why couldn't it have been used someplace else? Why did we levy that amount? So, I mean, I'm pretty clear. I'm a no vote on this, and that's my rationale.
Anybody else with comments?
I, oh, I do. I did attend a workshop for IMRF at the Triple I. I'm going to pass this down. I know that you haven't had this ahead of time, but, and I am far from being an expert on this, but the lady who made the presentation in regards to it, you know, was pretty direct and talked about the benefits of it and how the fund is managed and so on. There's a couple of things that stood out. When she talked about the funded status on an actuarial basis, she said they're 93.9%, you know, funded as of this point. One of the other things that she pointed out was the assumed rate of return for 2019 is 7.25% and that the average employer contribution rate for 2019 is 9.06% and probably going up to 10.91% for 2020. So, if I understand it correctly, our contribution that we're doing is below these amounts that the other contributors would be putting in. So, I guess, you know, looking at it that way, there's the positive that is helping us along, because there's going to be people retiring, and there's going to be more people retiring, and we're going to have to pay in that regard. And as, you know, has been pointed out before, the employee pays 4.5% is their contribution, and the school district is paying a lot more. Plus, if more money needs to be put in there, they are telling us we have to do that. So, I think there's just a lot of moving pieces that are part of this. I think it was an informative workshop, and maybe, you know, if there's any questions on this, I'm not the expert probably. Lauren, you know, in the business, might be able to answer this better than I can, but I thought it was an informative presentation, and from what we're doing, it looks like we're heading in the right direction for it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'd say we're beyond the right direction. I think we're at the destination of that direction based on where we're sitting. Last year's June GASBY statement had us at a $4 million positive. That was before we made a $10 million contribution. There was a little bit of a market swing, so this June, we were down. There was a little bit of a market swing, so this June we were down. But if we were sitting at a $4 million, or even a $5 million liability relative to GASB 50, we will most likely see that return and be positive. If we add another $5 million, we're just putting $5 million on top of assets at that point. I don't see our employer rate dropping much more below that 7.5, 7.6 position that we're at now. It's not like additional contributions will move us another 3% like it initially did. I think the natural progression of the interest and return on that investment has accelerated the gap that we had, and the creation of that liability, to continue at such an aggressive payment of basically dissolving the liability and a payment of this amount doesn't seem to make sense. It doesn't take advantage of any of the returns that IMRF has positioned to make. So, from that perspective, it seems kind of foolhardy to place this money into that investment mechanism.
I'm not sure I followed that. Our investment won't take advantage of IMRF returns. Can, can you comment on that?
So, if you have a liability, right, you need to close a gap?
That was a question for Lauren, or Dr. Kate?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were addressing me.
No.
Okay.
Absolutely, we do benefit. And if we don't have that money in IMRF, where it, so far this year it's made 17%, it would make approximately 2% somewhere else if you look at the last month's investment returns. So, the strategy that we have is to pay off any of the liability, where you, A, offset liability, and B, you have far greater returns on the usage of those resources. It is displayed, it's manifested, in exactly the levy comment that we just talked about. It allows us to reduce the levy amounts in other areas and improve them in our education, in our educational fund. It is exactly the, the right potion in our recommendation. To center the efficiency and optimize the resources was the continuous call from the board in the strategic plan. And we believe that this has, has done that, and will continue to do that. I have included the fund balance report to let people recognize that we are now at a point, it was a reference earlier, I believe from Mr. Dombrowski, that we have been spending down our reserves. That is, that is accurate. And we had done that, and we are now at a point of being level to where simply our cost of living increase is what we believe there is a plan in place, and an efficient plan, that allows us to continue all of our comprehensive programming within simply the annual cost of living increase. Very few districts have that, and it is a very strong position to be in. We, we believe strongly that to make more on the investment is a benefit, and direct answer to the question, we do benefit from the returns and the sizable returns on the IMRF investment that are projected for this year.
So, with that rationale and logic behind it, even if we were in an asset position, you would recommend additional contributions into the IMF? Just based on the rate of return and, and the value of return on that investment?
That would be something for the board to consider. That would be a potential, as opposed to some other, some other...
Bert, if we were in an asset position, would it be the administration's recommendation to capitalize on the returns with additional investments?
Well, I can't speak to that relative to any other allocations or projects that would be forthcoming, but that could be a potential benefit, absolutely it could.
And how would the district realize that benefit?
By the investment earning money, it offsets the future liabilities.
But if we're in an asset position, and we have no liabilities, future or otherwise, and we're continuing to build interest off of assets, and we're at a fixed employer rate, I'm not sure I understand how we would be in a position where we would be offsetting liabilities if we wouldn't have enough to drive us into a liability position.
The recommendation that we are presenting tonight is the advance payment of $5 million. We have a current unfunded liability amount of $5.8 million. And to help illustrate the benefit that we have seen on the investments, again, seeing about a 5% return just over the past few years, I'm going to go back to the point that Mrs. Klimkowitz made on the employer rate that the employers across the state are seeing. And I don't know if you recall, but there was a graphic that we showed in our presentation, I believe it was at the October 3 meeting, where we presented IMRF, and had the chief financial officer from IMRF here. And we showed how we, the district, has, have always essentially fallen right in line with the, the average employer rates for the past decade, I believe, is what we had provided there. And for the first time in that 10-year period, we have started to fall below that. And you can see that gap widen, and that gap is direct savings to the district. And the district still has a portion of its, of, it has an unfunded rate of close to 1% of that total employer rate of more than 7%. So, we, we are still paying expense on that portion, and the benefit that we have gained from these additional contributions will continue to be used against that unfunded amount, and we will continue to earn interest earnings on those additional dollars. As Mr. Malat shared earlier, the additional payments that we put on are specific to District 211, and we will continue to reap the, the benefit of those additional contributions and the performance of the IMRF portfolio.
We do this not for a financial purpose, other than to eradicate a cost that does not affect the quality of education. When we finish eating this liability, the next one, just like Mike Malat referenced, is the THIS liability. If you don't get that under control, it manifests itself and shows up 30 years from now, just like the state of Illinois. The pension contribution crowds out all other state spending. And that is a problem that the state cannot solve. It is a problem that we are attached to through the THIS liability. It's a $120 million number on our balance sheet now. This that we're talking about is peanuts. The big one is when we get done eating this one, to start in on THIS, and we can get that cost under control.
We can't do anything about THIS. We can't...
So, that's not true. We can, and we can talk about that later. But right now, we have this. We eat these things one at a time.
I didn't bring up THIS, so I'm just trying to see the relevance of your point, and from...
It's bigger than this.
Right, and from my understanding, the district has no control over reducing that liability. It is completely restricted on the state side.
Maybe Dr. Kates can provide information on that later.
Well, I just don't want to put misinformation out there that we can do something about that.
To answer, to answer your question briefly, and to move forward, there are vehicles to do that, that are separate from contributing it to the THIS fund, where you set up a vehicle that is designed to do that, and that is possible.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Lefaver?
Aye.
Next, we have established time, place, and date of...
Excuse me, a question?
Sure.
The, I read the preliminary or the draft resolution, okay? It's signed, it was in the packet. I mean, it's signed by...
For the IMRF, Mr. Kramer, I'm just trying to clarify. You're talking about for the IMRF?
Yes, 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 yeah. The, it's signed by the board president and secretary, I believe. Is there some other, is there a vehicle where it can be shown that the resolution was not unanimous? That it was 4-3 by signatures of the board members?
In the board minutes, but the documentation to make the payment does not require a, a complete listing. Just that the board, the board is one board, acted to pass the resolution.
I think it's important that the public understands that it's 4-3 and not 7-0.
That's the purpose of the minutes of the meeting. Okay, next item is to establish the time, the place, and the date of regular Board of Education meetings. We have suggested motion that the Board of Education change the starting time from 7:30 to 6:30 for the purpose of entering closed session for the following board meetings for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year. Thursday, January 16, 2020; Thursday, February 13, 2020; Thursday, March 12, 2020; Thursday, April 2, 2020; Thursday, April 23, 2020; Thursday, May 7, 2020; Thursday, May 21, 2020; and Thursday, June 18, 2020. Further, that the board secretary be directed to post proper notice. The regular open portion of the board meetings will begin at 7:30 PM. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I probably have the most flexibility of anybody at the table. I can meet at 2 o'clock in the morning, or 1:00 in the afternoon. So, it really, I'm indifferent to it. My concern is that I know we have people who, who work far away, and they must face a commute and traffic, and I'm concerned that a 6:30 start may eliminate people showing up at the beginning of a meeting. That's my concern, but it's, you know, again, I'm, I'm neutral, I'm indifferent.
I think we've done it a couple of times, and it has worked out well for us. It's worked out well when we've had to have the attorney here, so we know that they come in, we take care of business. If they were required to stay later, I'm sure that they would have to, but it would be good to expedite that within that hour before starting our meeting. And if we're meeting basically once a month, with the exception of two months, what is it, in, in April and in May, if we didn't need a closed session, we'd be able to announce that well enough in advance and not have that 6:30 closed session. So, I'm in favor of it, I think it, it worked.
I think it's important that we, obviously, we have to read per the Open Meetings Act, why we go into closed session. And it's specifically to be transparent to the public. There was some discussion about being more actively engaged than in earlier hours, so I'm not sure why we'd want to reserve our energy for behind-the-door discussion versus open comment. Additionally, we've placed some of our finance and budget committee meetings at a later time to help accommodate public participation. I think this is a move in the opposite direction of staying transparent and available to the community, and starting a, a meeting with, with the public there.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Lefaver?
Aye.
Next, we have potential topics for future discussion. If nobody has anything, that will bring us to committee reports. First, we have Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization. Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Okay. I have a few things that I will give to you after the meeting then. Part of the conversation at our last board meeting evolved around the Kirk and Minor program redesign, and they gave us an update as to what was going on. Some of the curriculum development, the upgrade at Kirk Campus. Also, looking at the playground that, the inclusive accessible playground that's moving forward, and installation in spring at Minor School, which, which will be really fantastic. So, if anybody has an opportunity to go over there to see that playground once it's installed, that's, that would be really good. Also, looking at positive safe learning environment and professional learning. The Kirk Action Plan Team, they talked about more supportive communication and collaboration in regards to the Kirk Campus behavioral leadership team. So, looking a lot more for the social-emotional learning for, for our students, and for the effective care for our students. Dr. Hackett and her staff has been extremely involved in the new ISBE permanent rules that protect safety for all students as far as restraints and seclusion and things of that nature. I know Dr. Hackett spent a lot of time, just before Thanksgiving, working with ISBE and trying to get a better understanding about what's being proposed. And some of it seemed like it was kind of a knee-jerk reaction to things that were happening. And it was, you know, some places, maybe students were not dealt with as, as they should have been. And we're very fortunate here that they've, they've followed policy and so on. I think it's a lot of consternation right now with the staff there between Kirk and Minor of uncertainty as to what's going on. The NSSO is going to be getting more equipment for, for the teachers and for, for staff as far as gloves or headgear, all sorts of things, because a lot of our students, some of them are big students, and some of them are very strong. And there's some different changes that are taking place. So, there's, there's a little concern as to what's going on. So, that was most of the conversation in regards to that. They also talked about student outcomes and looking at doing more coaching with the staff to, to help them as far as different aspects, whether it's defining the role of what that coach is and utilizing their skills in, in a better way. And they want the teachers to, to learn and grow, and that's where the coaching is, is going to help. So, they're using Elena Aguilar's book, The Art of Coaching. So, that's something that, that they've been working on. I don't know, maybe Dr. Kates might add a little bit more in regards to the safety and seclusion and things of that nature.
Yeah, for people's awareness, because this is an item that you might read in the news or hear in, you know, various places. So, we are already, our practices in District 211 are already ahead of what the state is proposing for guidelines. So, in that sense, we are in very good standing. And while some districts are making adjustments, we, we don't have to make those adjustments. Our practices will continue. However, there is one, I think, bright line that helps to capture sort of what the state is now looking to do, to track what is occurring surrounding seclusion. So, in the past, we have always, if ever we have gone to any seclusion, and there are many different gradients and factors and facets associated with it, right? So, a lock on the door. None of our rooms where we would have students in a calming room, for instance, have a lock on them. So, those instances are different here than in many places. If ever we were to have a person, and they would qualify under the general category of seclusion, we would notify the parents. So, the state board is now requiring us to, in all districts, to notify the parents, but also notify the state. So, we will be expanding our procedures a bit in terms of reporting to the state. It is a simple state report, but I did want to just give you that to, to give you a snapshot, that we have always notified parents, but then the state now wants to be able to track across districts what is sort of common nomenclature, and what is the, the category of the restraint or seclusion.
Is, is special ed losing a tool that's been used before, I think, effectively because of this?
So, the word effectively is, is very, very tricky. So, there are a lot of ways to do this effectively, I believe, and that, I think, is the, the matter. And I think it's been healthy for the state to examine this, and to make sure that the practices are known, and that we're able to trace and improve practices that would not be helpful for students.
Well, I have every confidence that the district has been doing it correctly and is going to lead the pack in this.
Our people have been working very hard on it. We appreciate that confidence, and I would, I would corroborate that. We appreciate that confidence, and I would corroborate that.
And Dr. Hackett has been very much involved in state and federal, and NSSO is very well recognized for what they do for the students.
I had a question. So, you know, when we're talking about providing protective equipment, is there going to be training available as well? Because it's not really good enough to just hand a teacher or an aide a head, you know, a head protection device and expect them to know how to use it effectively with their students. Those two, you know, you have to have the de-escalation training to make those devices effective, to make sure that we're not doing, you know, some really harmful things to students, regardless of how big or strong they are. So like, do we provide that kind of training to our staff?
We do. There's a whole sequence of de-escalation training that many facets of our people go through. But NSSO is also one of the, typically a regional training provider, and because of Dr. Hackett's engagement in so many different state committees, she is often called upon to organize and serve as the hub, if you will, for the trainings that occur. But to your point, it is spot on, yeah.
Right. And just to add to that, they do have equipment there now that they're utilizing, but they're going to make certain that they take inventory and see what else needs to be added to it, whether it's the hats, the gloves, and also staff needs to be utilizing those.
Yeah.
And I think that that's an important thing. So, yeah, that's a valid point, and the training is very important.
Thank you. Next, we have Ed Redd and-
I was not able to attend. Lauren was there.
There was a meeting last Friday. There were two guest presenters that were present at the meeting. The first was Anita Benary from Forefront, and she was there to speak about the importance of Census 2020 and the data collection on that. She talked about the role that education has in ensuring that everyone participates in the census survey, but then also the impact that that census data has on education, specifically with the level of federal funding that the state of Illinois receives, and provided some useful tools through the Forefront website that are available for teachers should they wish to use those in their classrooms and educate people, students and their families on how to complete the information and the importance of the information. I think one of the things that she shared was that, over the past several years, while we have lost significant federal funding because of the lack of participation in the study itself. So she was one of the presenters. There was also a state representative who was there presenting on the importance of the school administration and school board contact with their local representatives, just ensuring that they have information from the local level that is, and perspectives on issues at hand relating to educational matters, and provided some examples of things, making it through committee onto the floor. And typically, there would not be much discussion at that point, but, you know, getting outreach from local school districts was helpful to get actual examples of information that were able to be used and be part of the discussion when particular bills were being discussed. I think the only other matter that was really discussed in detail at that meeting was the Property Tax Relief Grant and, or, excuse me, not grant, the task force. And there is the expectation that a report would be released by the end of December, and nothing has been shared at this point.
I just want to let people know that I was asked by Ed Redd to speak to one of the governor's representatives on Monday about that a little bit, and there were three facets that I've conveyed to you in various communications that we think could be helpful. One is the continuation of the Property Tax Relief Grant, hold harmless, for the levy abatement. The second is TIF reform, and then the last is the, this notion of districts benefiting from, and taxpayers benefiting from reducing debt service levies relative to an amount of reserves that a district may hold. So that's fundamentally what I intend to convey.
I'd like to ask a question, going back to the census. Great that they provided material and recommendations. Are we planning to do anything in our schools to educate our students around the importance of Census 2020 and how their households can and should participate?
We don't have any specific campaign planned yet. We have put a lot of communications in the schools, but we don't have any communications campaigns planned, per se.
So when you say we put communication in the schools, what have we told the teachers what they can do, but not encourage or facilitate?
There's informational materials in the student services areas, those kinds of communications that are available.
Available, so like pamphlets in a stack, things like that, that they can come and get if they so choose?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Could we share some more information, maybe in the newsletters that the principals send out?
Yeah. Tim, do you want to comment on that at all briefly? Our newsletters and our community connection will be the clear venue by which we will do that for certain, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have partners for our community, Evening Community Services.
I can share an update with you. We met in mid-November, just shortly after the previous board meeting, and it's encouraging to see the continued momentum that the partner agencies are gaining. The specific examples that I wanted to share with you come out of, first, the Schaumburg Township Library, which is hosting monthly reading programs for young readers at the Higgins Center. In addition to that, the Village of Hoffman Estates has hosted some personal safety workshops, and the Schaumburg Rotary Club is, twice a month, convening a satellite group of its own membership to promote the work that they are doing. And then, we also had some new partners representing Wintrust Bank, who expressed a very sincere interest in developing some financial literacy programming that they would offer in isolation and as part of the adult ESL programming that is running out of the center.
Thank you. That will bring us to our Illinois Association of School Boards report. Mr. Rosenbloom?
Thank you. Over the weekend of November 22nd through 25th, several members of the District 211 Board of Education Administration, Dr. Cates and Dr. Small, attended part or all of the Illinois Association of School Boards, School Administrators, and School Business Officials' Joint Annual Conference in Chicago. The conference included many workshops, learning sessions, speakers, networking opportunities, and the annual IASB Delegates Assembly, and an exhibition hall showcasing over 250 vendors related specifically to schools. From our school board, Mrs. Klimkowitz, Mr. Lefever, Mr. Young, and I attended. When I attend such conferences and workshops and meetings as a District 211 school board member, I learn things and attend sessions with information that I can bring back to share with my fellow school board members. This way, although you may not have attended, you could still benefit from the programs. I've done this for the past two years, and such is the case with this year's IIII conference as well. Each of you at this table have received a file folder from me tonight with information, handouts, and presentation slides from programs I attended and participated in. I attended a pre-conference workshop entitled "Balancing Effective Governance and Transparency: Advanced Issues." This workshop included information about FOIA, conducting board meetings in closed or open sessions, governance around holding meetings, and communication between board members and the community. I also attended two workshops targeting board members, which are included in your handouts. One was on making, one was on making enrolls for decisions between the board, superintendent, and school administrators. The other was on how to respond and handle communication with the media. I found that especially interesting. This year, I also proudly served as this district's delegate assembly representative. In addition to electing some people to the IASB leadership ranks, as you know, during the delegate assembly, several resolutions were put forth to the 451 school districts represented for consideration and voting. During this meeting, we received some handouts that I also included in your folder. One is the FY 2019 IASB Annual Report, and the other is an overview of the 2019 Legislative Session in Springfield. I hope you find this information of use and helpful in your being a D-211 board member. At last month's District 211 School Board meeting, I went through Resolutions 1 and 3 with you, while also asking if anyone had questions or concerns for discussion on the remaining resolutions. During that meeting, we decided, as a board, to vote against Resolutions 1 and 3. In addition to voting against both resolutions, I also spoke to the 451 delegates present in support of why we chose not to support them. The Assembly voted against Resolution Number 1, which was a resolution to permit the carrying of concealed weapons by any school employee on school grounds. The vote was 249 against and 198 in favor. The Assembly voted for Resolution Number 3, which was a resolution to advocate for the creation and funding of school resource officers if the school district qualifies based on budget and remote location. The vote was 289 in favor and 126 against. This year, our school district submitted a position statement that passed in the delegate assembly. It is a statement urging member districts to develop educational programs so as to maximize educational opportunities for students by fully utilizing teacher and staff potential, community resources, and physical facilities through a well-balanced program. An important aspect of this statement is that school personnel are encouraged to implement trauma-responsive practices to support student success within a trauma-responsive school framework and the mental health code. This position statement was drafted by our own Mrs. Klimkowitz and passed by the delegate assembly amongst several consent agenda items. Thank you, Mrs. Klimkowitz, for your continued leadership as a member of the IASB Resolutions Committee and representing the North Cook Division at the state level. At this time, I'd like to turn my report over to my colleagues who also attended the conference for any further updates or comments from their participation.
Well, mine was the IMRF, and I've got a couple of other workshops, and I can make some of the copies for next month's meeting. One of them was really interesting, was a school safety plan, and what happens if there is a disaster and you have to evacuate your students. And they, the presenters were from Illinois State University in that area, and they did a phenomenal job of how they would utilize the university as the meeting place. They did some drills and so forth, and learned some things that they could do better. So that was really interesting. And there were a couple of other workshops. One of them was on recruiting board members. And, you know, with every year with elections, some areas have a really hard time getting board members or getting people to run for office. And I think the important thing that came out of that, the discussions that were had, is whoever runs for a school board position has to be open-minded and has to keep the entire district in mind for the benefit of the kids, for the benefit of the community, and not be just a single-issue type of a candidate. So that was one of the, part of the discussion that was had. So I will share some information at the next month's meeting, some handouts. And again, I'd like to thank Mr. Rosenbloom because he took the will of our board, and he addressed the Assembly there and talked about Resolution 3. So that moved forward, that was well-spoken, there were a number of people who spoke in regards to that, and he expressed our position well. So, so thank you with that. I believe also that Resolution 1, with the arming of, you know, school personnel, they are not going to present that next year. I had an opportunity to speak with the board member who was representing them, you know, just a wonderful person, a calm, wonderful lady, extremely disappointed, however she understood, and they're going to do whatever they can to make certain that they keep their students safe. So at this point, they are going to see what's going to happen with Resolution 3 and about funding, and move forward that way. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that will bring us to announcements. We have our upcoming list of events and important dates. There are no questions there. We have a motion to enter closed session. The suggested motion is that the board will enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, Appointment, Employment, Compensation, Discipline, Performance, or Dismissed or Love Specific Employees, the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, and matter pertaining to an individual student. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?